Whereas the Stafford County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712, the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and/or considered.
Sir a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you hold the board, excuse me?
Mr. Connolly.
Agreed.
Mr. Cater.
Agreed.
Zieggen.
Agreed.
Hazard.
Agree.
Ms. Healy.
Agree.
Mr. Hyrens.
Agreed.
Mr. McOscar.
Agreed.
Madam Chair, your motion passed unanimously.
Is there a motion from closed session?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for the AP position at Shirleyheim Middle School.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Dr. Benson, will you make our announcement?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to announce Mr. Jeff Jones is the school board's appointment this evening as Assistant Principal for Shirleyheim Middle School. Mr. Jones is...
Is he here?
Yes, he is, yes.
Please stand up.
And it looks like he has some company, right? Yeah, very good.
Let's see who else is here.
Mr. Jones is currently an eighth grade geography teacher at HH Pool Middle School. He began his teaching career in Montross, Virginia. He joined Stafford County as social studies teacher at Colonial Forge High School in 2003 and transferred to HH Pool Middle in 2014. Jeff has had a variety of leadership responsibilities at HH Pool Middle in addition to his internship completed at Colonial Forge High School. He is currently the Social Studies Department Chair and the eighth grade discipline designee. He is a member of both the Crisis Team and the Climate Committee. Mr. Jones earned his Bachelor of Arts degree in history from James Madison University. He earned his Master's degree in educational leadership from Virginia Commonwealth University. Congratulations, Jeff.
Well, not welcome, but in your new position. At this time, we will have our invocation and our pledge allegiance. Our colors will be presented by the Stafford High School NJROTC. You all will stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready, cut. Present, class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's always wonderful for our students to start us off and to have our NJROTC programs help us out. Next, we will move on to approval of the agenda. Ms. Healy, do you have a motion?
Yes, ma'am, Chairman. I move that we approve the agenda with one item removed, and that would be item 10.04, approve the 2017-18 High School Program of Studies/High School Course Catalog, which item I would like to have placed on the agenda for a special call meeting after our work session next Tuesday, December 20th.
Second.
I understand staff has some work to do, you know, on that.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in...any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and the agenda is approved. Our first item is in our special presentations, I'd like to call forward our Stafford County Public School drum majors to come forward. Thanks for coming.
Good evening, Chairman Hazard, Vice Chairman Egan, members of the board, and Dr. Benson. My name is Gina Demola, and I am joined this evening by my fellow band leaders, Jacob Mitchell, Caroline Bingham, Jas Linwin, Rebecca Milson, and Shane Dabbler. We are here this evening to thank you for once again supporting Band Together to Fight Hunger.
Band Together to Fight Hunger 2016 was once again a huge success, thanks to the support of our incredible community citizens and business partners. We would like to thank all who attended and dropped off food and donations prior to the event. We are very excited to share what we once again had an incredible support from our community business partners to include donations for concessions from Sam's Pizza and Chick-fil-A. 1,000 free Chick-fil-A sandwich coupons for our attendees who provided a donation to the Fredericksburg area food bank.
In addition, we received cash donations totaling $9,400 from the following business partners: High Note Trips, founder Doug Armstrong, Dr. Elizabeth Achried, McDonald's, Pontevia, Wise Markets, all three of our Stafford County Walmarts, Kid Med, and Shehe Toyota. Donations from our business donors provided 18,800 meals for our community, and WDF Trucking once again transported all of our donations to the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank. We'd also like to send our thanks tonight to our Stafford County community, who attended in large numbers, support us in our community service project. With their help, we collected $2,909. This equates to an additional 5,817 meals for our community, as every $1 serves equals two meals.
During the course of the evening, with the help of our band booster families and Kenny Fletcher with WDF Trucking, we loaded 4,279 pounds of food onto the semi. This donation of non-perishable food items provided an additional 3,566 meals for the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, as each pound of food provides 1.2 meals.
Band Together 2016 provided a unique opportunity for our community to celebrate both our Stafford County High School marching bands and our commitment to the hungry citizens right here in our surrounding communities. The grand finale consisted of 400-plus Stafford County band students, and it was a highlight of the evening. This was a chance for all of us to come together and perform "America the Beautiful" for our own community, as we were directed by one of Stafford's own, Megan McCullough.
We're thrilled to report Band Together 2016 provided over 28,000 meals for the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, which is an increase of over 7,000 meals from last year. We are sure you'll agree our band programs make a huge difference in our community. Thank you for continuing to support our music programs. We look forward to welcoming everyone back to Mountain View High School for Band Together 2017 next November.
Thank you all. This is truly one of those events that is unique to Stafford and just brings out the best for all of us. I know all of us who were able to get there really, it's just such a great event every year, and we will just, and you'll have to get us the date as soon as possible so we can get it out on our website for 2017. So, thank you all again for coming this evening. And I see Mrs. Bingham hiding back there, too. Thank you so much for all that you do with the bands and putting this together. Our next special presentation, if I could, is regarding our annual audits, so I will bring Mr. Fulmer up to introduce the team.
Good evening. You each should have a quick packet of our draft CAFER. It will also include required board communication from the auditors, and then a letter to management to discuss any control deficiencies. I'm going to introduce Lou Cannon, who is the audit partner on our engagement from RSM McGladrey, and he's going to give a quick discussion and go over the main opinions, what our results were, and go through the other letters that are attached. So I will turn it over to Lou, and while Lou's walking up here, just a reminder, I put it in the discussion points, but this was discussed at the FAB meeting last week, and they had some questions, and Lou responded to those, but he'll open it up to you guys as well. Thanks.
Lou, before you get started, Mr. Hyrens, do you have any comments prior to, or would you like to have Lou give his first?
Yeah, we did talk about this a little bit today. We did hear from Lou and his team on...
Last Wednesday.
...with a kind of, again, kind of a pre-brief of this presentation tonight. We definitely got into, I think, to some pretty good detail there that night. I don't expect the same deep dive unless members do have those questions, but I appreciate your time for participating in that evening and taking the time to give us that little pre-brief.
Okay. And I'll try to be brief this evening also. As Chris said, you have three documents, and this is what's called CAFER, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and there are really only a couple of pages in here that we own. If you would turn to page one, this is our opinion on your financial statements, and it can, opinions can range anywhere from adverse to the highest level is unmodified, sometimes called a clean opinion, and we do render a clean opinion on your financial statements. We also render opinions on what are deemed to be major grant programs. So, there's a determination process that we go through, and then we audit those, and we literally render an opinion on compliance, and you receive a clean opinion on those So if you would flip then to page 13, and I'm not going to get into numbers, but I just want to point out one or two things that are really pretty relevant because they're fairly hefty. This is the statement of net position in the private industry, will be called a balance sheet, and you can see that it lists your assets. There are some items called deferred outflows and deferred inflows. That's just, it's accounting nomenclature. There are items that are going to be expensed, or they're going to be revenue, but in a future period. So it's deferred until then. That's all that means. So in the liability section, about two-thirds of the way down the page, you can see the net pension liability, it's the very last thing, and it's 230, almost $239 million. So, you know, it's a large number, and it plays into our testing, and actually, some of the comments that we'll have later on, I just wanted to point out. So, you have 200,000 at the very bottom, around 200 million of net position, most of which is tied up in hard assets, being buildings and equipment. So, any questions on that? All right, then, I'd like to jump over, you also, the next document is a report to the board, and this report actually, the requirement for it comes from a study of audit failures, and it turns out that a number of the large audit failures like WorldCom, Enron, many years ago, if there had been direct communication between the auditors and either a committee of board members or directly with the board, might well have prevented some of those. So out of that study has come this requirement for us to communicate with either a subcommittee or the full board itself, or both. And there are specific things that, if you will flip over to page one, there are items that we're required to address. Things like, you can see down the left-hand side of the page, our responsibilities, we sent a letter to start the engagement talking about our planned overview and timing of the engagement, accounting practices. If we had seen evidence of management adopting aggressive or unsubstantiated accounting principles or treatments, we would point those out to you here. There were none, obviously, but that's the sort of thing that we're required to communicate in this letter. On the second page, audit adjustments, there are audit adjustments associated with every engagement, and not everything is finished, you know, Chris can't get all the work done exactly when we get here, so we know there are going to be a couple that are going to be made, but there were none that came from our audit testing, which would indicate errors. So that's something that is always of interest to boards. Uncorrected misstatement, this is, again, is not unusual. You can get down close to the end of an audit, and if there is a potential adjustment to be made, sometimes it's not material, and it's more of a pain to run it through the financial statements than just pass it, because it's not of a size, or there's not anything qualitative about it. It would change a user of the financial statements, their conclusions about your operations and financial stability. So there was, if you flip over two pages, the, there was one uncorrected misstatement, and it's done for administrative purposes. I pointed out to you the $239 million net pension liability. Well, one quarter of 1% of that is associated with FLEET, which is the Internal Service Fund. So for administrative purposes, it's just, it's being left in the overall governmental activities. So it's just, there's no need to break it out and make it hard to deal with and, you know, parse those for little bitty numbers. That's the only reason, there's nothing wrong. Sometimes people see the term misstatement and misconstrue what that means. Okay. In our testing of the major programs that you have, we did have one finding, and that finding relates to documenting time worked in a particular program, and it's supposed to be done semi-annually. In some instances, we saw where it was done annually. It's, you know, it's not a really significant deal, but there is a requirement that it be documented semi-annually. So, the reason it occurred, we actually had the same item last year. Somebody retired, new person really wasn't aware of it. So that's, there's been education done, and that's being dealt with. So, and we will obviously test, every time we have a finding, when we come back the next year, we test to see that it's been, you know, the management response has been implemented. Okay, the last item is a management letter, and this is about control deficiencies, and they really come in sort of three levels. Control deficiencies occur when either the design or operation of a control doesn't allow employees in the normal course of doing their duties to prevent or detect and correct errors in the financial statements in a timely manner. So, a control deficiency may not be really much of a risk, or there's a sort of a continuum. If there's a reasonable chance that the control deficiency might let an error get through that's material to the financial statements, then we would label it as a material weakness. If there's something that was significant but not, we don't think a material error could get through, we would label it as a significant deficiency, and then there are just control deficiencies, and they can be many, and they can be, you know, just separation of duties, very simple things. This is a control deficiency, it's that lowest level, but it's, that's why it's set out separately. And there was one item, and that item is, has to do with your software. The people who enter time can also, they have access to what is usually by security measures, only the HR department. Like, you can't add new people, change pay rates, but your system does allow that. It's a, it's a system weakness, and there is a new module that's going to be brought online this year that will solve that, but it did occur, and, you know, it's our responsibility to point that out, because part of internal controls is having adequate segregation of duties. If somebody does an entire process from start to finish, if they make an error on the front end, it looks good to them all the way through, or if they do something on the front end, they're the only one that sees it. So that's why, you know, we point that out. Again, this is a part of the system itself, the system's going to be changed, that's the answer.
Chair, I do want to make sure that's abundantly clear, that it's a deficiency with the system as exists and prior to the MUNIS system.
Correct.
Coming online and being implemented.
Right, and this doesn't mean that anything incorrect happened or improper, it just says that, I'm just saying, there's a risk.
Yeah, but it's a complete new system, it's not just a module that we're adding to an existing system.
So when the MUNIS is implemented, we won't have that challenge anymore?
Yep.
That's correct.
Okay.
It has more sophisticated security as far as who can be locked out of what.
So if you are auditing next year, you will be working with our MUNIS system and not in the old system that we had. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
All right. Are there any other questions?
I have a question, but it's not specific to necessarily the data itself, if anybody had... The one question I brought up to Mr. Fulmer after our conference call last Wednesday, one of the things that we've been asked of from the board of supervisors is to enter into a joint CAFER and joint audit, and my question to Chris was, and he said you may be able to provide a good response here, or a thorough response, I should say, whether it's good or bad, what would be different from what we received right now and tonight through this process, as opposed to if we entered in with the board of supervisors, a joint effort, a joint audit?
If it's, if it's truly going to be one audit with one CAFER, then you wouldn't have this. That would not be done. However, Chris is going to, this information goes into the county's audit, so if, if this is not done, Chris still has to pull together the same information, we have to audit that information.
Right. And what my concern is more is, what do we receive as board members? Would we receive this document, the communication to board members?
It can be done.
Okay.
You know, we can do that as if, you know, you can, you can ask for that especially to be done.
And would it only relate to school board?
Sure.
Or school division information? We wouldn't necessarily receive the same, this same communication, the same document that the board supervisors receives, which would include all the county concerns, issues, anything that they may, any findings they may have.
Correct.
So we would be able to do it with, we get this exact piece of communication?
Correct.
Okay. This is one of my concerns of why I've, you know, hesitated supporting the idea of a joint audit with a joint CAFER, if you will, is because of one of the things that you stated, this was a result of the Enrons of the world, and it spells out fairly clearly, you know, what your issues are, what your concerns are.
Right.
I would want to make sure, as us, as the board responsible for the finances of the school division, that it's very clearly communicated to us, and we don't have to dig through the county information as well, if that makes any sense.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming, and...
And thanks for making yourself available for the FAB.
Yes.
Last Wednesday.
My pleasure.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next, we will move on to citizen comments. We have two people who have already signed up. If you are also planning to speak tonight, once I call them forward, if you would line up behind them so we can have each person come forward, that would be great. Let me go over the requirements for speakers, and like I said, then I will call up the two who have signed up, and again, if you are speaking and would like to speak after that, we welcome that. If you'll just go ahead and leave your seat so you don't have to spend the time getting up there and line up behind the current speakers. So, any speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation, especially if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. You will see a green, yellow, and red lights on. When you see the yellow light, you have one minute. When the red light goes off, you have five seconds to wrap up your comments. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chair. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Comments. I currently have Deborah Connolly and Casey Clark signed up, if you all will come forward, and again, if anyone else wishes to speak, just go ahead and make a line behind them. And Ms. Connolly, you are first.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Connolly. I live at 1350 Mountain View Road in Stafford, and I am the current chairman of the Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee this school year. Thank you in advance for allowing me to speak on behalf of our committee this evening. The Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee would like to update you on two important projects that we are working on this school year. First of all, we are extremely pleased to announce the sensory-friendly performance of the Rappahannock Pops Orchestra this Saturday, December 17th, at Stafford High School. Our committee has worked hard in partnership with the Special Education Parent Teacher Association, the Special Education Advisory Committee, the Rappahannock Pops Orchestra, and Stafford County Public Schools to provide an opportunity for our special needs population to experience a musical performance that is welcoming and inviting to individuals with sensory sensitivities. Admission is free, and the performance is open to the public. Second, the Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee plans to review and provide input for updating the arts sections of the current high school and middle school educational specifications for facilities. The high school and middle school educational specs for facilities are nearing eight years old, and should be reviewed in parallel with program reviews and updates. This will be a multi-year project for our committee with targeted completion in May 2018. We understand that the Stafford County Public Schools' capital improvement plan has not programmed any new construction or renovations for our middle or high schools outside those projects that are currently in progress. Nevertheless, this type of specifications review will be needed in the future, and it should be deliberate and methodical. Activities that the Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee will utilize to collect information for the specifications will include: visiting and touring selected secondary schools within our area, conducting teacher-and-student-focused group sessions for a deeper understanding of the needs and desires of our arts programs, a survey of community needs for our arts facilities, and conducting research through various other sources. Myself and the members of the Fine and Performing Arts Committee thank you for your time, and we look forward to sharing more about what we as a committee are working with, are working on with you in the spring. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Clerk?
Hi, I am Casey Clark. I have, let's see, my address is 71 Beagle Road in Falmouth, and I'm speaking about the redistricting at Falmouth Elementary School. I am a teacher at Falmouth, as well as a parent and resident, former student, so I'm very invested in the Falmouth Elementary community, and I just wanted to bring something to your attention that I'm concerned about, about the design capacities that I saw in the projected enrollment for Falmouth, because I know that they're planning to bring in about 120 new students next year, which we welcome and are eager to teach. I'm just concerned because the projected enrollment shows very little growth at Falmouth over the next 10 years, at the most 40 kids, and when I look at all the growth that's happening in our neighborhoods, it concerns me that that number isn't accurate. I pulled up the resident... I pulled up the residential development listing from the Stafford website of all the homes and neighborhoods that are already approved and in progress that are within our current district, and it shows 409 houses that are already in progress, like to be built within our area. So I'm wondering how that reflects 40 students over 10 years. And so that just makes me nervous because I want what's best for our school. So I just wanted to bring those numbers to your attention because that seems like they don't line up to me. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? Okay, I don't see anybody leaping over chairs to come running forward. So with that, I will go ahead and close public comment, and then we will move into our board member committee reports and comments. We will start with Ms. Egan with our student matters discipline.
On November 10th, 2016, a committee of the board met to, met to consider two student disciplinary matters. The committee expelled student A, and the committee continued the expulsion of student B and authorized the alternative education program.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we will move to board member committee reports. If there's been anybody who has had committee reports, actually, since we met in November, if you'll just kind of wave, we'll do any report. Mr. McCosker?
Okay.
Two committee reports here. First, our financial budget committee, as we mentioned, we met last Wednesday. We did receive the pre-brief on the Fab, I mean, on the audit, and we also received the pre-brief that we talked about in the work session of the Teacher Professional Development Institute. We also had another item I wanted to make sure we brought to everyone's attention. Ms. Egan brought some concerns to our attention, need of some safety concerns at the athletic complexes at Brookpoint High School, and possible need to look at those to make improvements for, to alleviate the safety concerns. I believe the committee referred those to Mr. Haran or our Facilities Department to take a look, make assessments, and let us know, get back to us on, number one, what the needs are there and the, the related costs. And we discussed whether that would have to be something that we need to focus into our budget upcoming, or if it's something that may actually increase costs so much that we have to look at adding it to the CIP. The other committee report, the joint 3-on-3, we do have a scheduled meeting, January 23rd, is that correct, Madam Clerk? January 23rd, and we're going to plan to try to hold that meeting at North Stafford High School because one of the primary agenda items will be the rebuild or renovation of the North Stafford Library. Now to put us there with members of the Board of Supervisors right there in North Stafford so we can really look, so we, when we see these slides on the design, we can really have a good aspect of what's going to occur there. So I hope we can make that happen. Ma'am Clerk, I did want to mention, if you have to, have you had the chance to look at North Stafford's schedule? If they can accommodate us, you know, I think the biggest concern, if they had a basketball game going on there, that would probably draw the biggest crowd, that might, would make it difficult to hold another event?
I called them today, talked to librarian, and talked to the principal. Neither of them had an issue for us going over there at six and having it in the library. So it looks like we're just fine.
Good. I'm looking forward to it.
Any other committee, Mr. McCosker, were you?
Yeah, I was also present at the, my first, my first in a long time Finance Committee. It was good, good to be back. The Gifted Advisory Committee met five December. I'd like to share a few recently held or upcoming gifted-related events. December 1st, there was a parent workshop at Gale Middle School for those parents and students who will be in middle school next year. And on the 6th, there was the CGS application workshop at Drew Middle School. January 2nd, the common, CGS is the Commonwealth Governor's School, so on January 2nd, the Commonwealth Governor's School CGS applications are, will be available online. February 12th, those applications are due to your gifted teacher or the, or the Melanie Daniel or, or her shop here, the gifted at the headquarters. January 14th to the 26th will be Canstruction at the Spotsylvania Town Center. That's always, that's always a lot of fun and the kids love it. And January 21st, Destination Imagination, or DI, Challenge Workshop, will be at the Dixon Smith Middle School. There are also, it's starting to spin up, so I'd like folks in the gifted community or those of you who have kids who want to come into the Governor's School, or at least apply for the Governor's School summer programs that are free and they're wonderful. There's a four, there's a four-week, high-level workshop for 10th and 11th graders, and it's free. And it's, it's a couple of, it's a couple of $8,000 worth of stuff. And kids apply and they gain entrance into that. It's a, it's a wonderful, wonderful summer program. Those applications are spinning up now, so please go on that Commonwealth Governor's School or your gifted website and find that out. And there's also some local, usually we hel, we hold them at James Monroe, two-week Governor's School, and I know my kids have done it and several other kids have done it. And then a lot of our teachers here in Stafford teach those workshops in the summer, and they're also wonderful workshops that are free. Free, you know, free summer school is always a good thing. So, so make sure that the folks that are in charge of the household and keeping the kids straight, go on and, and get on these websites and start putting these applications in. You know, you've got to be in it to win it, so stuff is starting to spin up on that. That's it.
The Citizens Advisory Committee met last night for CIP. Walter, I'm sorry that I wasn't able to attend. It's been a little bit rough being a single parent these days. But I'm going to be looking at you guys. They're inquiring about maybe making some suggestions on additional things that they can look at other than the E-WAL property reallocation and stuff. So we'll be talking about that soon. And since I'm here talking already, I just wanted to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. Those will be my board comments. I'll keep it short.
I'll do a quick overview. The CTE Advisory Committee last night was a great group of people. It's a wonderfully working committee, and it's great, the planning that they're doing going forward. So if you have that interest, please join us. It's a, it's a great committee. One neat thing of note was the Stafford Education Foundation, which I serve on as a member of the board, who serves on that. We have come together with the money that has been raised over the golf, golf tournament, the run that Dr. Benson helped organize, and we will be awarding scholarships at each of our high schools in the amount of $2,000 to a graduating senior that wants to go into education, which we are very excited about. Then not only are we investing in our students, but just like we talked about earlier, we'll be investing in our teachers. We'll be doing innovative teacher grants, which upwards in the area of $12,000, I believe, was the number.
I think we're still working out what the, what the amount will be per award, but there certainly will be opportunities.
Not per, but in that, that type of amount of money that will be available, there will be applications later in the spring for, that will be able to get to our teachers for innovative ideas in your classroom to help do that. Like I said, the exact amounts within there, but we have dedicated at least that much to that, which is very exciting for the foundation to get up and running again, and I'm very excited. We want to do our Grow Your Own program. I don't think Dr. Benson hands a letter to them saying, "Come back," but if we could figure that out, maybe we could do that. So I'm very excited that we've gotten that started. So with that, I will move on to board member comments. Mr. Hyrens, do you want to start us off, if you don't want?
Did want to acknowledge the band members that were here tonight. I always love it when they come in with their uniforms, they're great, and they band together to fight hunger, you can't beat it. Great event, really enjoyed it, another great night. It's, it is incredible to watch those 400 musicians get on, on the one field all together and do that one song. And a great event as well. Speaking of hunger, thank you to Chairman Hazard for organizing our board, school board and Board of Supervisors event where we help feed families at the Head Start Facility. For me, I did have a, I visited classrooms with Dr. Benson this past week at Conway, thanks to JR Raibold and his staff and students for their hospitality. And I wanted to give a special shout out to a particular fifth grader, Richard, who was assigned to me to escort me around the building. I was really moved by this young man. He's really a remarkable young man. Again, fifth grader, he's recently inducted into the Elementary Honor Society there at Conway. His family had, as JR had relayed to me recently, recently, relatively recently, immigrated from Ghana. They went through some struggles, got part of their family here, had to get over here for a little while, make some money, and bring some more family members over. Richard was fortunate enough to come over at a fairly young age, and he is just a, a absolutely remarkable representative of Conway and the Cougars there, as well as Stafford County Public Schools. Again, you know, I just wanted to mention him. Whether or not he's watching, I don't know, but I was really just incredibly moved by him. Wanted to welcome our new members. Ms. Decatur, this is officially your second meeting, but your first full, real meeting, so welcome. And Mr. Conley, welcome, your first meeting as well. The last thing I wanted to mention, tee up a little something, is I was reading through our HR report that we received, and I noticed retirement in there that was kind of close to this board. Dr. Sue Clark is going to be retiring in Ju, July, will be effective July, so she'll hopefully survive, survive one more budget season with us, and we'll be able to celebrate her retirement there in the summer, and it's going to be a real loss for the county. So thank you for all your years of service, Sue.
All right. Moving on, Ms. Healy? Any comments?
Okay. I too want to welcome our new members and tell you how fortunate you are to come tonight because the librarians have once again spoiled us with their cookies and candy. Some people know how to get to our heart through our stomachs, but thank you very much, once again, to our wonderful librarians who actually bake these cookies, get together, package them all up, and then gift them to us, you know, in, in December. So what a, what a nice welcome to our, to our newest members. But I, I want to share Mrs. Egan's comments on, on have a happy and safe holiday. I can't believe it's here already. It seems like we just opened school and we haven't had any inclement weather days, so that's always a good, a good sign.
Easy.
We'll get through, we'll get through this year and, and see what, see what happens. But anyway, I, I do wish everybody well, and I, I think it's going to be wonderful. Whoa, get out of here.
You're on camera, you're not supposed to yell at me.
I'm not yelling. Oh.
Knock over here, knocking on wood.
Well, we have a great bunch of people here, so we, we have to, we have to have some humor because a lot of what we do is, has no humor at all. But anyway, I, I do wish everybody well and, and get some, some rest because we always come back geared up, ready to finish up that semester and, and start over, get ready for the budget season which lays in front of us, lies ahead, I should say. So I, I also want to say I've enjoyed going to the classrooms with Dr. Benson. I'm not sure who has more fun, Dr. Benson or his students. The poor teachers are somewhat nervous. I say, "Oh, don't worry about it, he's just like one of your kids in there." But it's, it's, it's really fun, and it's so nice to have a superintendent who wants to be in the classroom, who wants to be with the kids, who wants to share that learning experience, and who very much appreciates our teachers and, and everything they do. So thank you for letting us go with you, Dr. Benson.
Mr. McCosker?
I totally derailed your train of thought, didn't I? All right. Great one, great holiday season. I'm glad everyone got back from the last one, safe and sound.
I think this closes. You can't read it.
And here, here's an apple for you.
You're right back to it.
See how, see how you are? I'd like to too welcome Ms. Decatur and Mr. Conley. Glad you're here. I'm glad you're going to share some of the workload. See if I like you or not, but I, I like the workload. No, welcome. Congratulations on making the board. You're, you're going to really add to the, add to the board here. Lot of good work going on in the school division. Staff has the board working hard. I mean, I think our last, finally, they're putting us to work pretty, pretty good. Our last meeting, I think we're up to about six meetings this month, and I think our last one's the 20th, right? So they're right, right up to Christmas, and then they'll, then they'll get us, they'll get us afterwards, so. But in all seriousness, the staff has been working quite hard. I am very, very impressed. I've seen staffs for 30, 40 years working hard, and you all are, you all are really good. And you're, you're producing products now that are based on data, and you're, and you're, and you're bringing it to the board, so I'm just, I'm just really happy. And you're doing some really good things for the school division, and you'll see some of that, some of it tonight. So, so keep up the good work. Usually don't mention retirements either, but Mr. Hyrens, you kind of stole a little bit of the thunder there, but you know, when I notice Dr. Sue Clark's retirement, on the retirement rolls, like many of our teachers and senior employees that have retired, you know, we get a little upset. You know, they've, even though, you know, they would probably rather throw tomatoes at us sometimes up here, but we, we have that relationship, and you know, Dr. Sue Clark has really taken her program, you know, 32 years serving the, serving the kids, she's really taken her program way, way in above. And she's known in the state, probably in the tri-state area, as one of the, one of the leading experts in, in her field, I think. And so I know she's rolling her eyes at me a little bit, but it's, it's the truth. She always gets high marks on the program when it's come, when the, when the big, big shots come down to investigate, and then she takes care of, and she really takes care of the kids, and that's, that's, that's the most important thing. You know, despite, despite some of us saying, you know, we, where are we going to come up with the money? Where are we going to come up with the money? She, she sticks to the, we've got to take care of the kids, we've got to take care of the kids. So I, I'll be, I know I'll be upset when she goes. I know it's going to be in July, but so, pretty big shoes to fill. We'll have to, I know she has a lot of good subordinates to pick from, to move on up, and so, anyway, just congratulations on your wonderful career and, and congratulations on, on what you've done for the kids over these years. Dr. Clark?
Ms. Egan, are you, did you say your piece? Want to go again? Go ahead.
Welcome, you guys. Last time I checked, I was the newbie. So I'm going to give you what these guys gave to me. Welcome.
Ms. Decatur, would you like to have board comments?
Yeah, real quick, if I can figure out how to use this microphone. I just want to say thank you, guys. Thank you all, first and foremost. They've told me that this was like jumping on a fire truck that's moving, and they were right, but you guys have been very patient with me, very, you know, just, it's really welcoming and supportive, and I, I really appreciate that. It feels good to finally be up here. The last three months were grueling, and I'm, I feel blessed and really excited to be up here, to be working for, you know, the community and the kids, and I'm really looking forward to what the, the rest of this school year holds and the many ways that I'll get to be a part of it. So I thank you, guys, for your support, and thank you all for welcoming me. I appreciate it. And happy holidays.
Mr. Conley, our newest member as of Thursday night.
Thursday night, thank you, Mr. Woman. I, I too want to just thank everyone for, for the appointment and for y'all's confidence in me, and I look forward to working with Dr. Benson and the board, and serving the Garrisonville District and the fantastic schools that we have there. I have four children in the system right now, and love our schools, and I know how important the work is that's done on the board and the staff and everything that goes in with the parents to make it work. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to it.
I won't say welcome. You all have probably talked to me like more than you've ever wanted to talk to anybody. So of course, welcome aboard. We're drinking from the fire hose, but the nice thing is, is not just because of a strategic plan that we have. I know each board member who's up here cares deeply about this community and the schools, and that's the greatest part about being part of this board, is even if we disagree, I know at the end of the day, our vision is still to make this the best school district and to make sure that our kids are taken care of. I found tonight an interesting night. My comments revolve around service in the community, and it was such a wonderful way to start off when we had our drum majors here to get us started, talking about how our kids are involved in our community. But I want to share one other thing that is a wonderful thing about service in our community is I had the privilege to go to Wide Water and to Shirley Heim Middle School, gosh, it was on December 1st, I guess it was, 1st of the month, and watched the Quantico Marine Corps Base adopt two of our schools, who will be sending some of their Marines into our schools to connect with our schools, and that they formally adopted them. And I thought at the time, I am from Pennsylvania, and I did- I did remember Mr. Rogers, but all I could think of was being a great neighbor. And the Marine Corps Base Quantico was an amazing neighbor by adopting those schools and getting involved, and had a wonderful conversation with Colonel Murray. So I just wanted to say it's wonderful to be part of a community that believes in service. I just wanted to also mention thank you to those who came and we served at Head Start. That was a wonderful opportunity. And how many kids I have seen out-serving in our community. I was at Hartfield's because I have a family member there. On a Wednesday morning, I happened to run into the Ferry Farm Supersingers, I believe, and they were in there singing holiday carols for the residents and just watching them. One day, I was in there on a Sunday, there was a young man from Stafford High School in there playing the piano that I wish I could play like that. Our students are not just learning in the classroom. They are also learning about service in our community, and that's one of the things I value. And on that note, I hope you all have a blessed holiday season. Stay safe. Make sure that you're all back here in 2017. And with that, I'll turn over Dr. Benson for his comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A personal thank you to Dr. Clark. I'm very thankful for the time that I've had to work with her in my short tenure here in the division. I'm also thankful that she's given us quite a bit of notice in helping us to try and figure out how to continue this exceptional level of service that we provide students across this division. And I know she cares deeply about ensuring that there's a continuance there of excellence, and we're going to rely on her to help us figure out how to make sure that that happens. So we thank you very much. And not just in the area of special education, but as a member of superintendent's cabinet, she's always reflective in practice and has all kinds of really good things for us to be thinking about as we're trying to work through any number of issues or things that we're trying to improve upon within the division. So thank you, and we'll have lots of time to say more, but just want to say that tonight. And then I would like to ask Ms. Johnson to come up to the podium and share some exciting news with the board.
Sit this right here. Good evening, Madam Chair and school board members. Yes, we have some exciting news for the school division. Stafford County Public Schools is proud to announce its recognition as a 2017 Best School District in America by NICH. Now, NICH is the largest website for researching K through D schools. SEPS ranked number 18 out of 131 divisions in Virginia. We also ranked number five for the safest school division in Virginia, also number 26 for best place to teach in Virginia, which is very good, and number 1,075 out of 10,000 for best school division in America. So SEPS earned the rankings by scoring high on a variety of factors, including the SAT and the ACT scores, student-teacher ratio, also the quality of colleges students consider, and reviews from students and parents. They took a survey. The data used in this ranking was obtained from the U.S. Department of Education and analyzed by NICH's team of data scientists to create the 2017 rankings. And we also received this really nice plaque that we can hang up for our recognition. So we're very pleased about it. We've already sent out a press release, put it on our website, put it on social media, tweeted it out, put it on Facebook. So we're very proud of this accomplishment and wanted to let you know about it. And really quickly, before I go, I just want to add one addition to our team in the communications office. We have Mr. Zach Flanagan. He is our new digital communication development manager, replacing Ms. Serena Mendoza. So he just started last Monday, and we're happy to have him.
Welcome aboard.
That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's it? Okay. Moving on to consent items. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
Madam Chair, motion to approve consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consent items are approved. Moving on to action item 11.01. Do we have a motion, or would you prefer to have discussion first?
If there's a motion, I would move to approve 11.01.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? We had some questions from last time. Ms. Healy, any particular questions?
No, I think my questions have been answered.
Okay.
All right.
Important discussion. I do want to acknowledge the work that went into this. Really, we started this, talking about this, I can remember, if not mine and Ms. Egan's first meeting, at least by our third meeting, we were talking about, we need a program evaluation. This is, you know, finally here. I know members of the board and members of the community have been clamoring for this for quite some time, and this is, I know, a first step to hopefully a continuous process and our continuous improvement within this division as well. So thank you to all the staff who have put time and effort into this.
I would just like to echo those comments. The professional nature of what we were presented was extraordinary, and the only way you can improve is to have the metrics, and we have been, Dr. Benson has helped train us on that with our strategic plan and in everything that we do. So this was a great amount of work. Thank you to all those who were involved. Any further discussion or comment? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to information items, 12.01. This is regarding approval of some early childhood special education. It has, see, we wanted you to come up here, so I was going to wait. Thank you. I don't know if you can give us a quick word. I will. I'm going to show you a little trend data. Excellent. It's not typical that this time of year, we're asking for two positions in preschool, one maybe, but not two. But you'll see in the data there over the last eight years where we are. And as you know, our early childhood special education programs serve our two- to four-year-olds with developmental disabilities. In 21 programs across nine schools, also to include Head Start, and we serve with resource services to preschools in our community. It's really challenging to maintain the state-required one teacher-to-eight preschool student ratio, and we serve typically four preschoolers in the morning program and four in the afternoon. That allows us to consolidate classroom space and still maintain the state standard. Already this year, we opened two classrooms with the positions that were funded last year, and again, challenging not only to find the locations and maintain the standard, but also to locate highly qualified staff in early childhood special education. We just met last week with Dr. Strike and George Mason University staff to see if we can create, and I think they are underway to start a cohort for endorsement in early childhood. So that's a whole other issue of challenge, but we're excited about that. As you can see here, we are exceeding our predictions in early childhood. Over the course of the last eight years, we've added six students, five students, seven, typically one preschool teacher annually, and then in the last two years, we had an increase of 17 and 16, requiring roughly two teachers. The good news is that children come at varying times throughout the course of the year. They're on the radar. They're in the hopper, so to speak, and that's where they are now. Another 29 students right now who are in the eligibility process. And again, our data show that typically those students are eligible for something if they've gotten that far in the evaluation process. So we have some hotspots in those 21 classrooms. Some are right where they should be. Some have an opening or two, and some we need to stop. So this request would locate two new preschool programs. We don't have teachers identified yet. We would be looking at long-term subs, although we might have some December grads. And we've identified Falmouth right now as a location and working with the principal there that we could open those classrooms, but we have to plan accordingly in order to get those identified students started. We will work with any families who have students in classrooms that may be a little overcrowded if they wish to move, as long as it's as close to their home as possible in the southern end of the county. So that's where we stand right now, and there really was no other way around the request for positions at this time. In talking with Chris, I think he identified a new term for me, but buy-ahead funds for the 2016 budget with two teachers, two paraprofessionals, and then we hire hourly staff as well for some overlap time because we do have typically developing peers in those classrooms with the four-year-olds with disabilities. So really eight in the morning, eight in the afternoon, four with disabilities, four without, and additional staff during those times.
Ms. Egan.
Dr. Clark, it almost sounds like time is of the essence on this.
It is, in that those, with some of the kids, we have time, but certainly to set up the classrooms. We've been doing some pre-planning behind the scenes, but we haven't obviously started the process.
Would it be helpful if I moved us to action tonight?
That would be great.
Okay. Madam Chair, may I?
Yes. Well, let me see if there's any discussion.
Finish the comments first, and then you can move away.
Are there any, yes, Ms. Healy.
Dr. Clark, these number changes from last year are astonishing. It looks like we have a 25% increase.
Forty-four.
Forty-four students, if it's, went from 179 to 223. Is that 223 an actual, or is that a projection?
That's an actual right now, considering those that are still in the process but anticipated through our childified office to be eligible.
That was the 29 that you mentioned?
Yes.
Or being evaluated?
Yeah, and three of those were transfers, so.
Do we have any information about why we have such an incredibly high jump this year?
We don't, other than the anecdotal analysis of the students and the types of students. All are not severe in nature in terms of medical needs, although we had this conversation at length with Scott, and in terms of long-term planning for classroom space. And we know at our planning meetings, it's difficult. It's the classroom, they are the classrooms where we can move students because they're typically not in their community school, but yet it's right now for us a heavily growing area. So some are students who clearly had medical issues at birth, or who have, we opened a new classroom this year for preschoolers with autism. So three of those 21 classrooms are preschoolers, three and four-year-olds with autism, clearly identifiable. We have a classroom this year for preschoolers with pretty significant behaviors as well. So in addition to the other developmental delays in cognitive and gross motor, fine motor, academic areas, we have seen a trend in autism at an early age as well as significant behaviors, whether that be through foster care and drug-addicted babies at birth, which isn't necessarily a trend, but we do have those cases that are foster care babies as well, and then a number of transfers.
This is something we're going to have to keep an eye on with the budget coming up. I mean, last year, didn't we add about 29 positions last year?
We did, and two of them went to preschool. And if you look in that one year, and I have a, I do have a data chart that goes back 20 years. I really didn't want to date myself, but I guess that's out of the bag right now. So we had a real, I'll share it.
So we've been staying in the 10% to 12% range overall for special ed, haven't we, over the, a long time?
I think we're doing our December 1 count right now, and it's looking like about 200 new students with disabilities this year. So we're going to go above that 10%, probably closer to 11, and that's our highest since I've been here.
Right, and then to have 25% increase in just this preschool in one year, to me, is something to really keep an eye out for.
Right. And there's not a lot of wiggle room with preschool, with the standards. Our teachers can pick up a couple resource children who they can monitor, either through the community or through home visits, but we are locked into that one-to-eight-plus-two resource. So we are looking at what some of the other school divisions are doing, whether we can locate some program sharing with Head Start, which we're doing right now. We have three programs at Head Start, so it's nice to have variety there and access to other three- and four-year-olds, two three- and four-year-olds. But long-term, it is something that I think we're going to need to study beyond if this trend continues. That 2008-09 school year, we were trying to look back at records today. We did change our program model that year. It was the stimulus timeframe, and we needed to do some things differently. That's where we combined our AM PM classrooms, and we did have a reduction in students, but I'm not, I do want to check that for accuracy because that was a big decline, and we did not hire preschool teachers for that timeframe. But then, from that, from 2008, it just steadily went up with one-year exception.
Dr. Clark, is this funded at all with VPI? Can we, are we going back to the state to ask for some sort of grant money to help offset these costs, especially with the rising, you know, this rising issue across Virginia?
Yeah, it is across the Commonwealth. There's no doubt about it. What I'm hoping for is there could be a shift in some funding sources at the state level for certain school divisions that haven't been able to access certain funding streams. I'm hoping that we're going to be one of those, and if so, I would recommend that we really look at preschool as a targeted area. We've targeted autism for a number of years now. We've been stable, even though that steadily, you know how many positions you've supported in the budget for autism, and that classroom space is premium, too. But those children are really in their community schools. So we've targeted autism. We've targeted emotional behavioral support classrooms at our, with our public day schools, with our classrooms, our staffing standards, and preschool is one that has caught up with us that I think we're going to have to really put some concerted effort into looking at long-term with space, with programming, with locating teachers as well.
I mean, it's a significant, it's becoming a significant portion of our budget. It really is, not just, you know, the preschool, but, you know, taking care of the students with needs.
Right. Early intervention, and we know that, I mean, we know that early intervention works, but these students are probably remaining in our special education programs for several years before they either exit into general ed or are identified with a specific disability. Right now, it's, with the exception of autism, most of them have a non-categorical type of disability because they're so young. They're babies, and we haven't identified exactly yet what the specific delay is.
And you know, that's something that, you know, Mr. Conley, and I know Mr. Hironz is, and many of you are keeping tabs and keeping on the heartbeat of the legislation because it really is starting to become a significant portion of the budget when you're hiring 29 to 50 new employees every year to manage this. At the same time, the nurses and the teachers and the constituents are saying, "Lower, you know, I need to hire 10 more teachers, the lower class sizes," and we're, you know, so it's just something that we really need to put some focus on to, and I know we have, but.
No, you're right. And the time that it takes, I mean, at the school level, with our building-level support, it's time-intensive. And these are the families where it's their first impression of our school division, and whether they're in a preschool program or in their community school, it's, and we do have a good model that it's recommended that we use typically developing peers with our kids with disabilities, so that model's effective. And I think that's, Mr. McCosker, as you were saying, as the Virginia Preschool Initiative and as there are national and state discussions about, you know, preschool programs and how young we're going to take kids in, it's not many times for us that we don't want to. But as we know later on our agenda tonight, we're talking about space in our buildings, and I think it is about rethinking our spaces and where we're going to be doing this because there's a lot of people, and I think we need to be talking about that. As I have spoken with the Board of Supervisors, I believe we need to have a real concerted discussion with them, not only through three-on-three, but through a real look at growth, and not just growth of new people coming in. It's the type of growth we're getting, the type of student we are serving, that that has some impact on our school buildings and such, and we need to be having those discussions so we don't build a school too early, but certainly not too late, because if we build too late, you know, we, and especially for some of these populations, the disruption is significant. Not to mention the related services that are involved. Right. I mean, with just about every preschooler, there's a speech and language Right. component, or an occupational therapy component, PT. component, or an occupational therapy component, PT, autism services, or, and we're training teachers at the same time, so.
Well, your retirement's denied, just, you can go back to work now.
Madam Chair, so, Dr. Clark, this is bringing us into compliance with the state mandate, right? And we're not funded for these, as, you know, Mr. McCosker has drawn out for these additional positions.
There's, there's no additional funding. It's, at this point, it's local funding. These children will get reported as preschoolers in our December 1, but they're technically not enrolled in our schools yet.
But we're not voluntarily arbitrarily making, setting these staffing standards. These are state-mandated staffing standards for participating in the preschool program.
They are, they're one to eight, and I'd be glad to share that data at some point with you.
This is as well-defined as an unfunded mandate as virtually anything else can be.
As IDA has always. It is, it's never received the funding stream since its inception, not even 40% of the cost of what that federal program requires.
I'd like to ask that this be more examined within the Legislative Committee, not only for the Legislative Committee to examine it at the state level, obviously, you know, anything, any legislation that exists this year, we should probably get on it to support it. If you happen to know of any that exists, that'd be helpful too.
Let us know.
But in future years, to, you know, draw this out, next, you know, use this as a great example of an unfunded mandate, and that's get some funding and work with the federal side as well to identify any funding streams that we can, or we have someone who knows his way around federal government now.
And when it's up for, when the IDEA is up for reauthorization, it came and went and was not reauthorized, so it's way past due.
Yes, Ms. Healy.
Dr. Clark, this is proposed to go, add to preschool classrooms at Falmouth, and Falmouth is one of the schools that we're looking at to potentially add more students to next year. Would it present any problem for the preschool if we were to have to relocate it after the end of the school year?
We know that that's a possibility, one or both. If the numbers projected hold true, I think everybody, including Sally, feels like it would totally put Falmouth at capacity with these two, but if the numbers are higher, we know we may need to relocate. It's the where, where relocate is always going to be the dilemma at this point, because all of our schools are really close to being out of space. So we'll be looking at that between now and then, even once the classrooms are located.
All right, any further questions for Dr. Clark? If not, Ms. Egan, would you like to?
I'd like to make a motion to move 12.01 to action.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move 12.01 to action. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The 12.01 has been moved to action.
Madam Chair, move to approve 12.01.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, not hearing any further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to information item 12.02. This is regarding North Stafford High School. We had a briefing on this in our work session regarding possible renovation, well, renovations that we did commit to as part of our Moncur discussion and several budget discussions. I know we were running a little close on time, so I would like to open it up to any board members if there were additional questions for Mr. Haran, or if there are some in-depth questions you felt that we did not meet, we can also add this as a work session item if we had to next Tuesday. But if there were any remaining questions, and, no? All right, any comments? All right, moving on. Let's move on to 12.03. This is to approve a change order in the amount of over $180,000 regarding some improvements related to the expansion at Mountain View High School. Any questions for Mr. Haran? Mr. Haran's, or Ms. Healy's?
This isn't a question, it's a comment. I'm very happy to see that we have contingency funds to pay for this unexpected expense.
All right, any, all right. Mr. Haran, is this an item that is, would need to possibly, would there be any help to approve this change order this evening?
Yes, ma'am, madam chairman, board members. If the board so chooses, it certainly would help, it would allow us to start this work sooner than later. If the board feels it needs more time to consider it, it certainly won't break the project, but it would certainly be appreciated if you would consider it.
I would like to suggest to the board, since I don't know if there will be additional work being done over the potential holiday season, or if there may be none, but if there was more, perhaps we would like to entertain that change order, but.
You'd like a motion? You're right?
I just have another question for Mr. Haran. Mr. Haran, this has to do with the storm water management.
The storm drainage system.
Storm drainage. Are they actually going to be doing anything between now and when we meet again?
Yes, ma'am, they're work, they, you know, if we gave them the green light this week, they certainly are going to be working next week. I just, we've known about this for probably about a month as we negotiated the cost for this particular change order, and so we have been, in theory, holding them back. They've certainly been working in other areas. This is the area around the fitness wellness addition, and it will actually impact the parking lot, and so we'll have to be cutting in the parking lot, and so while, they may take advantage of while, over the holidays, to do some of that excavation without disrupting. I don't know that for a fact, but that could be a potential.
And actually, I, just a comment, Ms. Hazard, I was surprised to see that we had unidentified utilities, because utility easements are all recorded.
Yes, ma'am.
So were these easements, I mean, how did these utilities get there if they weren't known?
It's a two-parter, and I think the first part is, we knew some of them, not all of them. There were several that were not identified, and the depth of the actual utilities is what really threw us in a tailspin. They were supposed to be at a certain depth, and they were not properly as-built after the project was completed, the original Mountain View. And so we had, for instance, we had a water line that we thought was eight feet deep, was actually 15 feet deep, and it was in, it was in the exact location where we were proposing to do the storm drainage system, which obviously is gravity. These systems are gravity, so you need to have a certain slope on these, on these pipes. And so that threw us for a tailspin. And in hindsight, as we kind of looked at this whole particular event and how it unfolded, I look back and I go, should we have tried and looked at a different route for this, knowing that there were so many utilities in the small area, that no matter how accurate the information was, it was still entering into a quagmire with, you know, just waiting for something to happen? And to me, I think it's the latter, we should have potentially looked, although it was longer we would have identified. But it's easy to look in hindsight, to look back and say, we should have done this. But the option that's being proposed now, obviously, does not impact some of these utilities, makes it much easier, and if we would have had a part of our bid, we still would have paid the additional dollar, but not necessarily a change order price.
And I understand this work is very expensive, and it's unavoidable, we have to do it. I'm just disappointed that these as-builds weren't accurate. I mean, they are sealed by engineers, are they not?
Yes, ma'am.
When they're presented to the county, they're required to get, you know, occupancy permits from the.
If you remember, Mountain View is a design build.
Get off bonds.
And.
It was a PPEA, as I recall, so.
Yes, ma'am, and it was a design build, and so the team, the contractor team that provided this to us, you know, was part of the contractor. And so, yeah, I would have thought we would have had a better job with our as-builds.
No excuses from them.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, well, I don't have any problem when we finish discussion, make an emotion to move this up forward, as long as they are going to get to work right away.
Thank you.
We need that addition so we can get that marine JROTC in Mountain View in the fall.
Right, guys? Any, any further discussion? If not, then Ms. Healy.
Madam Chairman, I move that item number 12.03 be moved to action.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye of moving this to action.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item has been moved to action. Ms. Healy?
Madam Chairman, I move that item number 12.03 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our other information item is 12.04, which talks about our Teaching and Learning Summit, which we had an excellent presentation about this evening. I don't know if, since then, I thought we had a great discussion about this wonderful learning opportunity that has many benefits, I think, to our school division, not just our teachers, but our stu, certainly our teachers, our students, and I think our division as a whole. I think it will also work with our rankings as we continue to move up in whatever rankings we have. Were there any remaining questions that anybody had of Dr. Strike or her team?
This is more maybe a question for Dr. Benson. Do we have the money to pay for this, available for this year's budget?
We do in operational savings, Ms. Healy, the same funds, a portion of which would also be going to the library renovation at North. So if the board should choose to support this moving forward, we believe we'll have the resources to do it.
So we may consider, if the board is amenable, we may put this on the agenda for Tuesday, if we would like to put this in the North renovation, because these are both items that we would like to, I think, telegraph our support.
Madam Chair, if I, if we could, and this is in deference to our new members, so they can absorb this a little bit better, I know Ms. Decatur has some thoughts. Can we just go ahead and wait until the next regular scheduled meeting for, to be in action? I think it's, you know, it's going to get a favorable response, but just give us a little bit more time to absorb it.
It would also give Mr. Connolly time to absorb some constituent feedback on the library, and I agree, Mr. Hiron's.
All right. I was just throwing.
Madam Chairman, just, I'm not going to be at that meeting, I'm going to unfortunately, well, fortunately or unfortunately, be out of town, but I do want to just put on the record my support for it. I think this is a fantastic program, and I just, it's so much to help our staff and our students, and I can just see, you know, so many rewards coming, you know, from this, that I really am excited about it, and maybe I'll be on that little urn that y'all carry around on the telephone to vote for it.
Excellent, all right. Well, moving on, we will go to our staff reports. We will have our first staff report, which will be the presentation of our service staff pay structure, and it's from our committee. I'm going to invite Ms. Boatwright, and I'm going to say the team. I will let you introduce the team.
He's going to be a team. Oh, I love paper, thank you, Ms. Healy. Paper's there. It's the lawyer thing, Trish.
All righty. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Benson. Thank you for allowing us to present the service pay structure findings regarding compensation for our paraprofessionals and school nurses. The committee has been meeting since October to gather and analyze the market compensation data for these groups. Tonight, we are pleased to have three employees who will present the report to you. Christine Ozato, paraprofessional at Stafford Elementary School, Nikisha White, administrator of Health Services, and Jay Cook, supervisor of Technology.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Benson, and guests. My name is Christine Ozato, and I am an instructional paraprofessional at Stafford Elementary School, and I've worked for Stafford County for over 19 years. I've been asked to speak on behalf of the paraprofessionals in Stafford County regarding the proposed pay binding. Your desire to study paraprofessionals shows your interest in ensuring that our group is brought to market in terms of salary, and I would like to thank you for that recognition. The duties of a paraprofessional have evolved, along with those of all educators and with all of, of all educators and education as a whole. Paraprofessionals have evolved from a mere supporting role in the classroom to a true para educator. Under the supervision of the classroom teacher, the instructional paraprofessional provides direct instruction to the students, as well as implements IB, IB, I'm sorry, IEP goals, behavior plans, collects students' data, and administers tests. Specialized training is required in some areas, such as reading and mathematics. Special education paraprofessionals in the low-incidence classrooms, especially EBS and autism, require federal and state training certifications, and must demonstrate annual proficiency in these areas in order to remain in compliance with federal and state law. The market-based comparison study you requested shows that paraprofessionals in Stafford County Public Schools are well below market. As a result, we continue to see a higher-than-average turnover rate, 15%, with about 60% of paraprofessionals in years zero through five of experience leaving still on Level Zero. As you will see, the changes in duties and responsibilities lead us to focus on differentiating compensation for varying requirements in different positions. We all want what's best for our students and our employees. To achieve this, we need to replace the antiquated compensation model and integrate the actual contributions and commitment made by our paraprofessionals through a market-based salary structure that includes incentives and opportunities for employees to improve their skills in the classroom, thus benefiting the students. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Benson. My name is Nikisha White. I am the administrator of Health Services. Stafford County Public Schools nurses meet the daily complex medical demands of our students. Stafford County Public Schools nurses provide care while promoting health and wellness, preventing illnesses, managing student health conditions, and engagement in, and engagement in staunch advocacy for our students. In addition, nurses must recognize social determinants and social stressors that affect health care, and note health disparities faced by many of our students. Our nurses also serve as the employee and occupational health consultant for our district. The commitment of the board to study school nurse salaries and adopt a market-based compensation model is most encouraging. While not too far out of market, there is still room for improvement in a market-based compensation model. Our current model is simply out of date. While recognizing a difference in education levels, there are no incentives for professional growth to further enhance the value and skills of our school nurses. A market-based compensation models, model that provides incentives for professional growth would have a direct impact, and, I'm sorry, a direct, a direct and positive impact on all students, especially our medical fragile students, and further a safe, positive educational experience. In the handout for the board, statistics are provided for the services provided to our students. Thank you very much for your time.
Madam Chair, board members, have you just heard from Christine and Nikisha? We have some challenges with compensation as it relates to pairs and nurses. The committee used the same methodology to conduct the market-based study that we use for technology and maintenance, as you may recall. Many of you have seen this slide before. We gathered salary information from our comparable. salary information from our comparable school divisions, the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, and Spurling's cost of living data for the counties in the study. This is the Stafford County government pay band that we adopted for technology and maintenance. Each index, each of the pay bands are indexed by the midpoint or average salary of similar jobs in the market. For this study, we transferred all the salaries over to hourly rates, even though the individuals being considered for the pay band are contract employees, and on a salary, we adjusted the table to account for the various length of service for the day, for the hours. All these different school divisions had different hourly, they posted as hourly rates, too. So we also had to extend the area up here, the A009, the yellow area. That's, we extended it up to accommodate the salaries for this study. Each pay band is ten percent higher than the one below it up through A10, in case anybody's calculating. Okay, so the following data is focused on the paraprofessionals. Here are comparisons to school divisions. We took the average adjusted by cost of living, and then you see the Stafford salaries at the bottom. As you can see, we are well below market. So we looked at the various kinds of paraprofessionals, and there are a lot of different levels of training, levels of requirements, what they do on a daily basis, and there are some, for example, the autism pairs have a state certification they have to meet, and the EBS and autism pairs also have the handle with care training that they do annually. So there are wide varieties in the requirements. So this slide shows the market rates, the current pay scale, the market data from the slide previously, and what we propose for pay banding for the general pairs at A009, and a paraprofessional two, if you will, for instructional emotional behavior support, and Title I pairs, and then autism pairs at A02. Any questions about paraprofessionals in there? We're basing that on the midpoint or average salary that we found in our comparables.
Any questions or comments?
Okay. The next slides are about our nurses. These are, the nurses are, follow a model that's more like the maintenance department, or, not that students are like air conditioning or anything, but they are.
Whatever it is.
Sorry. Anyway, we took the same information from our comparables and adjusted and found, we are pretty close as far as the salary levels, but we also have a difference in.
Could you go back?
Oh, sure.
I was just looking at the. Do all the districts have the same nursing degrees? Because I know we have.
We have RNs in our schools, and some of these districts have nurses that have degrees that require less education.
Yeah, this data is for registered nurses.
Oh, it's all RNs?
But we have other data. Again, we have a lot of different levels that we looked at.
But this is registered nurses.
This is registered nurses.
Registered nurses data, okay.
Okay, so they're all RNs. I just want to make sure, because there's LPNs.
At a minimum, yes.
That's a good question.
We have some data with BSNs and MSNs as well. So these are the different, I learned a lot about nurses during the study. There are LPNs that aren't on this slide, but there are registered nurses, nurses with BSN or MSNs, and then there are different levels of certification above that. And so this is, this is what our plan is for placement on the pay band. The LPNs are, their data was, we're very much in line, although it's not presented, they are very much in line with the A04 pay band. The RNs are right there at the A07, and the comparison data we have shows the A09, or the bachelor's and master's plus certification. So this is our proposal for the school nurses. Any questions about the nurses?
If I could just make a, if I could just make a quick comment, as the board may remember, one of the proposals, and it was adopted by our board of our legislative priorities, was about nurses and having a nurse in every one of our buildings. As many, some people may or may not know, the state standards of quality does not require a nurse in every building. It's by number of students. As I was saying to a, actually a legislator, I said, I can't imagine being a principal and having, not having a nurse, and our nurses are amazing. I thank you for those who are here tonight to support and to come in and hear this tonight, but that is something we put as a legislative priority that the state, because when you think of our C5W, the W part of that in wellness with just the allergies and many things, the things that our nurses are doing today, as you talked about the increase for our pairs of their professional responsibilities, I'm sure Ms. White could tell us all the many new things that we have, and the drawers of medication and things that are kept. I just, I just can't imagine running a building without one. So I just wanted to mention that I appreciate the board, and I think Mr. Hirons, I know, being married to a nurse, also understands how important that, too, is going forward. So I just wanted to mention that while we were here.
While you're here, but I'm thinking, next slide you go to gives us some data on number of employees, but do we have a breakdown of number of employees by the different categories that, both for the pairs and the nurses, that we have current?
We have the total numbers. We don't have them broken down for tonight.
Okay. So that's, and Mr. Hirons brings up a good point, and I surmise what he's doing is the same thing I'm doing, is trying to put the numbers together to find out how much that package is going to be, so that when we go into the budget, you know, we'll know. And what I have done is just, I just wanted to really quickly, you know, the nurses are doing, you know, they're doing fabulous things, not only with my kids, but the kids across the division. And some of the things, like in your briefing, you know, they're dealing with cancer patients and tube feeding, and, you know, and they're just doing wonderful job, asthmatics and EpiPens, and just across the board, you know. We've been talking about nurses for a while, just as long, just like we've been talking about paraprofessionals. I mean, it was Janet Smoot from Ferry Farm Elementary School and the paraprofessionals there in the Reading Center, a year and a half ago, I guess, Dr. Benson, they sent you a, said, hey, here's, here's the data on our, and, you know, I think we're way below, and I guess your committee validated that data.
Absolutely.
For the paraprofessionals, showing that, you know, Stafford is $2.82 below the average for the, for the starting, $2.50 below the average for the mid, and $2.09 below for the high. And so, you know, that's a lot of money an hour, you know. $2.82 an hour for our paraprofessionals, just like our nurses, that, you know, they touch the kids every day. You know, they, you know, I call that the tip of the spear. You know, they touch. You know, you have to take care of the folks that not only support, but you have to take care of the kids, the personnel that are touching our kids every day. And so it's been a priority. We mentioned it at last board, last board's budget session. We mentioned the pairs. We were able to do a little bit, but I would just ask that, you know, and feeding off of Mr. Hirons' question, that, you know, if we could, Chris, just let's break out the numbers, you know, whether it's committee, it's probably a finance action, break out the numbers by starter, mid, high, give us the numbers from, you know, I did some numbers here, and it's significant. If we're doing 497 employees times the beginning, times 287, times the number of hours they work, you know, 1,500 hours a year, whatever that is in the, okay.
Don't forget that forty percent for benefits that we add on as well.
And then the benefits package on top of that, the hourly, exactly right. So I'd appreciate that. I know Ms. Hirons would as well.
Yeah, that's all, and I'm sure it may not be your phase two, but it is, it will be phase two of Chris Fulmer and Bruce of what's it going to cost us? Because, yeah, it'd be great to move to a modern pay scale for all of our employees, which we're working towards, which is great. If we can afford it, I want to move as fast as we can. So that's going to be our budget discussion of how much is this going to cost us?
Madam Chair, if I might, I, this is great work. Let me just say that. The level of analysis here is wonderful. I want to caution the board that we have not yet gotten teachers to the midpoint of the market. That doesn't mean we can't start elsewhere in the division, and we need to. The cost to go all the way to where we need to be would be a challenge for us, but that does not mean that we should not get started in the same manner that we are working on the teacher's scale. In the places that we have the data to support that we need to be doing something differently there, we should start in those areas, with a promise to get to every group of employees in the division over time, but we have to, we have to do this level of analysis for every, for every group. So we will be bringing back to the board the costs and breaking that cost out. The cost to do it all at once might be a challenge, but then again, the model that we've used with the teachers was not to do it all at once, that we would work at it over a period of years. So I think as long as we're making progress and folks see our commitment to doing that and know that we are going to get there over time, that would be a significant improvement for us as an organization.
Can I just ask, going back to a point you made earlier in the, in the program here, you know, fifteen percent turnover, that's, that's a pretty significant number. If you take a look at any business, if it has turnover at that rate, that's something that really needs to take a look at. Since I imagine that's a metric, a variable, that we're going to be dealing with down the line as we look at these types of employment issues. Is there a way, I mean, it seems like every spring and summer, my kids lose two or three friends a year because their parents are getting deployed somewhere, relocating. We're just in a very transient area. Is there a way to separate that fifteen percent from those who are leaving because they're being deployed or leaving the area because their time is up versus inferring that this is because of a salary issue? Do we break that apart?
We can do an analysis, but we can only do it as much as they give us the information. We do have an exit survey we asked them to fill out. There is a formal sheet they fill out, you know, as to why they're leaving, but we can only go by the information that they give us. Some of it we know because they verbally told someone, and we can use that data, and we try and break that out as much as we can every year.
Okay. It's great to know. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, I have two more slides, or I can skip to the end. Okay, one point on this slide is the evaluation criteria. Once we get this going, the evaluation criteria is developed by the employees themselves, which really gives it validity, and so that will be the next step in the process for these. Also, these, the numbers, 350 out of the 497 paraprofessionals we have are below the minimum, which is an extremely high number. Any last questions?
Any additional questions? Again, I would just thank you for the work for, and I know nothing is just an individual effort. I appreciate our para and our nurse representatives coming. I appreciate you all being here. This is always, this has been on the board's agenda. Like we said, I think Mr. McCosker said it earlier, moving to these data-driven decisions, you have to have the data to help make the decision. So this has been, this is an important part of that decision-making and budget process going forward. So thank you for all who worked on this. It was a very, very good presentation. All right. Next, we will move on to 13.02, our next staff report regarding elementary possible redistricting related to Falmouth, Winding Creek, and Moncur. We, at the work session, I guess over two weeks ago, I guess, we asked for some additional broad information about programs and capacities and some broader questions before we got into the process, and I believe Mr. Haran will be bringing some of that in.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chairman, Board members. I don't have a formal presentation tonight for this. I've attached in your agenda item or the staff report, three attachments, one for Falmouth situation that was discussed during the work session, the second for Winding Creek, and the third for Moncur. These are just papers that we put together, and hopefully we provided you with pertinent information that you were looking for. Certainly can answer each one if you'd like to approach each one and ask any questions. There was a fourth item that we had not provided information on, and that was the cost of the modular for the course program that you had asked to try to present tonight. We just hadn't had time to gather accurate information on the cost associated with that. So I'll provide that to you at the next meeting, hopefully, that we have. But, and then we have a work session on the 20th to discuss high school redistricting. So.
So my approach, if it pleases the board, if, why don't we take each one of these? The, by attachment, we can start with attachment one. That one relates to the Falmouth Elementary. If there are specific questions on that one, I would say if you want to call up your attachment one.
Yes, ma'am. I can give you, and just try to give you a real brief synopsis. Karen Neely and I met with Sally, Sally Joakim Putman, the principal at Falmouth, and actually rep from Student Services, Betty Reeves, to discuss what we felt the impact. So we made the assumption, I have some assumptions based on there, that based on the number of students that we've identified coming from the Ferry Farm and Margaret Brent attendance areas, essentially the England Run, the two neighborhoods in England Run, that we would, we assumed four additional classrooms. But that also assumed that some of the students would filter into existing classrooms, but these would be additional classrooms that would be needed. So based on that assumption, we looked at, and the assumption that the two pre-Ks that you heard earlier tonight would be at Falmouth. So based on that, we developed some requirements that we felt were a minimum based on the projected students.
Were there, any other options looked at on those pre-K classrooms at other schools?
No, other than locating them at another school. So that really, in the other, when we start to look at Winding Creek, we also have an issue with pre-K programs that are currently at Winding Creek that will also be needed to move. I don't want to speculate, and Ms. Clark, Dr. Clark can come up and talk about, but they would take a holistic look across the division as to where they would need to relocate these, and if they're going to be for a year or potential longer. In Falmouth's case, this is a long-term redistricting effort to move these students back into the Falmouth attendance zone. So with that said, the programs that are being started in January at Falmouth would be looked at, to be moved potentially from a long-term perspective versus just a short term as when we get to Winding Creek.
And as it's presented here, this is where my concern starts to raise a little bit. When we first started this process, we were talking about the South Seventeen, the southern part of England Run.
Yes, sir.
The folks there, the children that are going to Ferry Farm currently, and it was in the thirties, number of students we're talking about. Not a huge impact to the school, I wouldn't think. Now we're talking about about 100 students?
Well, I think there's 50, I think the numbers were 50, 54 from the Ferry Farm, and 73 from Margaret Brent. Now certainly, the board can choose not to entertain moving one or both those groups to Falmouth. There are certainly options in à la carte, you know, you can say, we want to move one neighborhood and not this neighborhood, based on the potential impact on Falmouth.
And they both have very valid concerns and very, very valid reasons that we should probably, you know, see that occurs or occurs in the best way possible. But it does start to concern me. to concern me as we're talking about, one of the option, or one of these statements here is conversion of music room to a general classroom. Where then is music being?
Well, if you follow it, the first bullet is to convert the existing computer lab to a music room. And the reason being that it's not just convert the computer lab to a classroom, is the location of the existing music room is in a location where the principal would like to have a classroom physically. And so the thought of converting the computer room is, is something she would like to do and turn it into a classroom. In this case, she would like to turn it into her music room and then take the music room and turn it into.
Now I was going to go back to that.
So it's a wash essentially.
The computer lab, is that a process we're moving towards more and more? Are there other schools? Are their computer lab or mobile laptops?
Well, I certainly don't want to speak for the instructional folks. I can ask any of them to come up and talk about it. But it's a, it's a function of why do we need a dedicated computer room when technology is being shifted and focused to be done anywhere in the classrooms with what we've, where we're going? And so certainly the model in the new school that we're building is not to create a, a non-flexible resource room just for computers. So.
Have we done any analysis of that?
I do okay there.
We currently have two schools. As of today, when I did a double check, two Ferry Farm and Park Ridge, I believe are the only ones who currently don't have a computer lab. And one of the things we talked about is.
Come on up.
All right. One of the things we've talked about at elementary school principals' meeting is just having a flex, the flexibility to work in the space that you're in, just like we do with our jobs. And so it's changed a little bit, you know, throughout the years. I kind of, sometimes we joke and say, we don't have a paper and pencil lab, and so why would we have to have a computer lab, right? It's a tool that we use. And especially with some of the blended learning that our schools are focusing on right now, our principals would rather have those tools in the classroom to offer that flexibility at any time, not just one time a week, or as a kind of standalone piece. So we are looking at that, but it involves a lot of, as you can imagine, you know, the fiber piece and the, the technical piece, you know, I have to leave that up to folks who know how to do that. But we've had to do it in some places as a necessity, but a lot of schools are moving in that direction just naturally. A lot of them have taken them out of their rotation, for example. We have schools in different places right now, but most of our schools would like to get to the point where they could have that flexible option of having more laptops, less standalone computers.
And so when we're going with that model, is the school division, are we buying those, those assets, those laptops? Those aren't, laptops are being purchased by PTO, PTO funds, et cetera, that are additional technology assets typically for.
Well, again, right now, most of that has been done out of necessity because we do, you know, we do have many of our PTOs purchasing our Chromebooks, and we have a variety at different schools, depending on what their initiatives have been. So I think that that would be something we definitely need to look at moving forward. And, you know, we knew that was going to happen with the new staffing standards, right, that we were going to need more space. And I think we're going to see more of that in the very near future. And, and this is one way that we could potentially have a win-win, to be able to offer the flexibility to our students in terms of learning and more of an all-century learning, just-in-time atmosphere. So we could have a win-win, but it is going to involve some work in terms of reorganizing those labs and making sure we have the, the whatever infrastructure we need to make it happen.
Part of what I'd like to see is just a little analysis of if there is anything that we lose, that the student experience loses when we go from hard-wire desktop workstations to laptops. My assumption is probably not, but I want to make sure of that. And also that these additional laptops and having computer lab in classroom, that the infrastructure in the particular school that it's being implemented in can handle that.
Sure. So that would be a collaborative effort? There, Mr. Mirror?
For, and for Ferry Farm, I, I've been in a few classrooms there over the last 10 years, but I know they do have one or two computers set up in each classroom. And it does give the teacher the opportunity to say, you know, to my son, hey, Patrick, okay, go do your test on reading, you know, you know, the book reading thing, or, so, yeah, but that's a valid, that's a valid concern that Mr. Hirons brought up.
Oh, sorry. Just a quick thought. As I sat on the Educational Specifications Committee, and there was a lot of conversation geared around this discussion, most of the folks that sat on that committee with us embraced this whole flexible space, which is how we came up with the specifications in the first place. I also think it's a, it's a good example to the folks across the street to let them know that, you know, what we are seriously utilizing every square inch of our, of our buildings for, for learning purposes. And we're not dedicating any one particular room to, you know, just laptops or standalone computers. So I think, I think us evolving into having more, using more of that flexible space is a great message to send across the street.
But we also have to make sure that we're ready to do that.
Correct.
If we're not ready to do that, especially in an older school, then we need, you know, we need to put the brakes on it. But we need the analysis to make sure that we are ready to do that.
I would agree with that. But I think we need to start somewhere to start making that transition happen.
What is, oh, sorry. No, no, because I.
I just have a question for Mr. Haran. Using these numbers, it looks like we would either be at 86.27% capacity if these students were added, or somewhere down the line, it says design capacity 90%. So I don't understand why if we're, you know, below 100% capacity, and 86 is certainly significantly below 100%, why we would be losing the music room, you know, or the computer room?
Well, we certainly aren't losing the music room. They're just, we're just converting the computer room to a classroom. So the music room's going to be still in a room, it's just being moved. So at Falmouth, that's being proposed. And we, what happens is, we were adding these pre-K programs that were never part of the design capacity. And we're adding other student service or special ed programs that weren't originally part of the design capacity. For instance, when.
Well, I understand. Let me just interrupt you for a minute. Just for our new members, we have design capacity. If you could explain the difference between design capacity and program capacity, because I think that.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, there is a difference there. And if that's the case, you know, why aren't we showing it on here? Because it just, you know, it doesn't make sense to me if we're so far below 100% why we would be losing anything. Now, you're saying we're not losing it, it's just a choice. But, but just as, if you could explain the design in the program, because.
Certainly. The design capacity is the intent of the architect in the school division where we actually build a building or renovate a building. And we have it, a certain classroom is designed for, to be a general-purpose classroom, which we will, not arbitrarily, but we establish a number of students that go into that. The DOE uses 25 and 24, depending on the grade level for elementary school. So the smaller classes, we typically design or have a stated design capacity for K through 12, K through 3 is 24, 4 and 5 is 25. And so you design or build X amount of rooms for each grade level, and you use that number as the, as the number. You also have several rooms, depending on your program, that represent special or student service rooms, you know, special ed. And we use eight students as a design capacity for those rooms. They're, in many cases, the same size, or if not larger than your standard classroom for general purpose. But because of the programs that they conduct in those spaces, you only have eight kids, eight students in there. There's other rooms that are resource rooms that don't count as design capacity because we take students in and out of those rooms all day long. So they're not, they're specials or for other programs. So the computer room was not part of the design capacity. It was a resource room that was, students come and go every day, different classes. The library is not counted as your design capacity. The music room is not counted as your design capacity because students come and go from that room. And the same thing with the art room. But generally, so that's, that's how. So in any given school year, we do not occupy those spaces as they were designed. Sometimes we'll take a regular classroom that has, was designed for 24 students, and we put a special ed program in it because of a need. And so now we have eight students or less in that space that was originally designed for 24. So the design capacity, we call it program capacity, is, the program capacity is different from the design capacity for that particular year. And, and those things happen. So when we introduce a pre-K program into any of our elementary school programs, except for the new school that's under design, all of the classroom spaces in all of our elementary schools were never designed for a pre-K program, for low incident or autism or those things. Those things have changed and evolved over time. So the question that Ms. Healy asked, the second question was, why do we use design capacity and program? Well, when I first arrived here 13 years ago, we, it became very confusing when we would use design capacity and program capacity, a lot of discussions with the board. So over time, we have just reverted to just using design capacity as the point of discussion. But knowing that there is a program capacity at our schools, and typically it is less than the design capacity. So the schools may have the capacity, the design capacity, maybe 950 students, elementary students for an elementary school. And we may have 880 students in there, and they may be full to the gill because they've used some of the rooms for additional pre-K or additional special ed programs or other things. So hopefully, did that help Ms. Healy, do you think?
Yeah, I, because I was curious, is we just have design capacity here, and then we're adding these two pre-K, which are going to basically take up.
Two rooms.
Two rooms for one. I mean, you've got eight students in a room, although the capacity is being calculated as 25. So I didn't know if that had an impact on this. I just don't want to lose anything because I've, I've gone through music on a cart, and I've gone through art in a cart, you know, as a parent. And it is, it's tough. It's tough on the kids, it's tough on the teachers. I don't, I don't want to do that to a school, you know, if, if there's any way to avoid it.
Right.
But you're saying that we're just moving the music room, we're not going to.
That's correct. In this particular case with Falmouth, that we're just moving it. And the only reason we brought it to attention is Ms. Putman wanted to actually move it because of the location. She, she certainly could keep that music room in place and just convert the, the computer room to a classroom. But it would, it would be preferable for her that if she had a first grade, that it'd be nearer the first grade, or kindergarten be adjacent, where the music room, if you know, at Falmouth, is up closer to the library. And it's right off the library. I'm sorry, the computer room. So.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think the other comment, but I think Dr. Clark sort of alluded to this when we were speaking earlier about the hiring, about the two new pre-K classes that are going in at Falmouth, that it's not at least off the table, that if those, that there could be discussion if, if those had to move, you know, to, to make this easier if numbers come in. It's just at least something that needs to be on the table. And it sounds like Dr. Clark and her team are also seeing that that may have to be a possibility. But it seems like it's serving something in that area of the, of the county. So we, at least it's something still on the table. Are there any additional questions about Falmouth? Any additional things to be researched? Or, because I think Mr. Hirons mentioned.
Yeah, I already gave, you know, some analysis. But I'd also like to, you know, look to see if there are other options for those pre-K classes. Just save a little bit more space there at Falmouth.
All right. All right. Let's go on to attachment two, which is Winding Creek.
Winding Creek's a little bit different. We are projecting in excess of 100 additional students for the next school year. Now, that's a projection. And certainly with the, the amount of volatility in some of the neighborhoods surrounding Winding Creek and along Courthouse, this may or may not come to fruition. Obviously, we hope it doesn't, but that's our particular projection. So sitting down with Ms. Worlow and Ms. Neely, we went through different options at how we could best prepare Winding Creek without significant facility investment, how we could prepare them. And so the assumption is, again, with the number of students that are projected, worst-case scenario, we hope, that there'd be four additional classrooms that would be needed than what they have today. And again, some of those students, those projected students would filter in into some existing classrooms. So typically, if you took 100 and divided it by 24, you're going to get four classrooms. And there's some pluses or minuses, but they would just be absorbed into other existing classrooms that are not max and exceed our staffing ratios. So the first requirement that we identified were that the two pre-K programs that are existing at Winding Creek would be relocated. We certainly, and again, I don't want to speak for Dr. Clark, but we talked about potential locations, but at this particular time, you know, she wants to look holistically across the division. So the exact location for relocating this classroom, not determined. But that is the easiest to make space for two classrooms. And I say easiest. There's challenges and difficulties in that, so I don't say that lightly. I mean, that's certainly very important to our student services and their parents and the students.
You know, Dr. Clark's throwing a lot of taskers into the system. You know, here she throws her retirement paperwork down. Oh, by the way, I've got about 80 things for you guys to do.
So, but she has a great.
She won't be here next year when we open. Oh, my goodness.
So.
Did we accept that resignation?
I, we, I think we did, yeah. Consent.
But with the two pre-K programs, that would have to have some deliberate decision-making to occur, to be able to prepare, to relocate those schools, notifying parents, preparing the, the location where they go. So that's why we had decided that to be the first wave, because you can't respond in August or in early September to move. It would be very difficult and very disrupting to relocate the pre-K programs if the kids. But we have a certain high probability that there'll be 50 additional students at Winding Creek, based on our projections. So if the next, we call it the next wave, next 25-ish number of students were to arrive, so now you're looking at 75 of those 100, we would convert a computer room at Winding Creek to a classroom. And that can be done very quickly because the furnishings in the computer room are movable. They're just tables. They're not built-in casework. Where at Falmouth, they're built-in. So it's a little more challenging, so it takes a little bit more time. So we could convert the room at Winding Creek very quickly. So in, in a matter of weeks, we could do that very easily. And the fourth, if the remaining students were to come, and we would start to see this occur in late August, then we have two options. And I broke that into, one would be converting a room that they currently have the focus program in, half of it. And the other half is they have itinerants, the .5 music and .5 art itinerants utilize that space. So that's one of the rooms that has a middle partition, you know, that you've probably seen in some of the classrooms. And so that particular space could be converted very quickly into a classroom. The location for the focus and itinerants would be a challenge for Ms. Worlow and her staff. But they could do it knowing that it would be potentially for one year, with the assumption that a more comprehensive redistricting look would occur in the fall, as discussed at the work session. The second option would not be as quickly to react to, but it would be placing a modular at Winding Creek. And if we saw that, we saw a need for that, the sooner we started on that, the quicker. But there would be, it would be something that would come into play late September, early October, you know, if, if the trigger was pulled in, in August. So obviously, but the likelihood and the probability of 100 students coming are less than 75 and less than 50. So we kind of staged it based on the probability of, and the risk, kind of a risk analysis as to, as to how to approach it. So, any questions on Winding Creek?
I have a broad comment, but any, any other board members? In that regard, and Ms. Healy, this is something I know that's close to your and my heart about. about administrative support on getting numbers early. That is my concern with Winding Creek. If we do not have administrative support in July, getting our kindergarteners and others registered in that school, the earlier we get hard numbers, if we're looking at fifty or seventy-five or a hundred and fifty, let's hope that's not it. Do you know where I'm going, Ms. Healy?
Fifty.
Well, Ms. Healy, I mean, how will we provide that support, especially in a school that we will have to be monitoring potentially, if it's fifty, seventy-five, or a hundred? How are we going to make sure that we get those? No, I'm not looking at you, Mr. Haran. This is really Mrs. Healy.
I know, but as you know, it's very difficult, even, even with what everyone would consider proper staffing, and, and, you know, it's very difficult to get real numbers until, because many parents wait to register their students in mid to late August. Many students aren't registered until right before school, and then the drop of no-shows that, that occurs after the first ten days, those are all challenges that, that every school faces, and the school division as a whole faces. So
I guess what I'm trying to, we've talked about this, how do we get the more accurate, because we don't have anybody registering our kindergarteners in July, or anybody in our schools? And if we have a major concern hearing the lead time we would need for some of these items, I'm just trying to come up with problem-solving ways to say, do we need to potentially provide some support there going forward, at least for this summer, as we monitor these numbers? It's just something for the board to think about, not trying to pick a school, but some of these items are not going to be, we can turn it around in a week when we get a hundred students.
Perhaps we could ask Dr. Benson to keep in close touch with the principal, to make sure that if they need any additional resources, that, you know, that, that's, you know, brought to his attention, and he has the flexibility of, you know, of assigning staff, and, yeah, albeit on a temporary basis. And I would think we would also want to keep an eye out, just like we did for Rocky Round and Margaret Brent, when their numbers got significantly, you know, higher, you know, percentage-wise than the other schools, that we did, you know, give some temporary hourly clerical support. And I, I know that's very much appreciated. I mean, I know all our clericals across the board, and all our schools work extremely hard, but there's, there's just not enough hands in, you know, there to, to get all the work done. And then when we look at the summer, aren't our, our office staff, you know, they're not, they don't work all summer, right, Mrs. Cale? Because that's something that's brought to us, you know, almost every year in the budget time, the elementary schools asked if we could, you know, extend their clerical support over the month of July, when they're getting ready, you know, to, to get people registered and get back to school. So it's something to, to relook at when the budget comes to us next year, you know, among everything else. But, but certainly, I sure hope we don't get a hundred of these students there.
I certainly hope we don't either.
And that's why I'm just trying to
That would be pretty scary, but I also do not want to, to have to deal with modulators, not when we're sitting with some schools close by
Correct.
that have empty seats. I think that would be irresponsible of us to, you know, to, to go to the expense of putting in modulators when we have empty seats.
I totally agree with you.
In, oh, go ahead, Mr. Benson.
Just, just real quick, I'm trying to level the bubbles here. So, so Winding Creek goes to, in twenties, next year, they go, they increase a hundred and ten students, you're thinking to, to nine-seventy-three, which is a hundred and eight percent, or whatever you have, a hundred and ten percent of capacity?
Yes, sir.
Is that, so is that, are we, so how many kids are we going to move to make sure that doesn't happen?
Well, again, this is all predicated on looking at doing a more comprehensive redistricting effort for a group of elementary schools across northern part of the county. And so this would be a one-year issue.
It's kind of a
And that's, that's what we're looking, how can we mitigate the impact on both Winding Creek and Moncur for this one year, as the board and our process goes through to redistrict, to do a comprehensive redistricting at the elementary school?
Right.
I'm sorry.
So I'm also, when, when are we, I thought Moncur was going to be up by September eighteen.
January of nineteen.
Mid-year, and no redistricting until the next year.
Okay, so that was, all right. Because I was confused on the numbers on the chart. Okay, got it. Yeah, all right.
In that vein, pull up Attachment Three.
Before we leave that, I, I would like to, to have Dr. Clark and her, her team look at whether those two preschools at Winding Creek can be relocated, in the event that it looks like we're going to be getting the, the additional students, because that's not one where we're actually moving the students, as I understand it, they're, they're all new students coming in to the preschools. Is that true, Dr. Clark, or at least a three-year-old, or two or three?
There might be some threes who go to fours. You'd have to look at their base school.
Yeah. But, but it's something that, if that could free up two classrooms, you know, if it's feasible, it's something to, at least we'd like to, you know, have that information available.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Not by the last, not, but not least, I should tell you, is Moncur Elementary School. Again, we met with Greg Mackey and Carrie Neely, and I met to go over the projections, and we're looking at roughly for next year, thirty-ish is the projection, about thirty students. We made the assumption that's one classroom, with the others filtering into the existing grades. And along with some of the, the early ones, we looked at the possibility of converting their computer classroom into a classroom. And so with that said, that would be kind of the requirement. There's some other additional, now, there's some other considerations. We looked at modular, we looked at potential move in pre-K program, but we don't feel those, we would need to go, based on the projections. Again, with the assumption that we're going to, the division is going to look at a comprehensive reshifting of students across the northern part of the division.
Any further questions?
I just think that, you know, the initial staff work, Mr. Haran, it's good, it's the best I've seen. I, I don't remember seeing in my four years on the board here, any costs associated with moving and redistricting. We've always said we're going to redistrict, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, but we never associate the costs of actually adding the teachers, adding the classrooms, that, you know, doing the work, getting the, so, you know, that, that in itself is, is, you know, it looks pretty good.
Unfortunately, some of it's TBD, but I'm committed to getting this filled in and
No, but it's, it's there for at least us to think about. And that's, that's what we need. We need staff to prepare it, and so we can make the best decision for the county.
Well, Mr. Haran, believe it or not, this one won't be for you, this is probably for Dr. Mira. I would think that what I have heard, at least somewhat from the board, is there is a concern, or at least to make sure that we understand the computer lab transition. And I guess my question to Dr. Mira is going to be, and you don't have to answer tonight, is, do we have, if, as we look at allocating resources, as we look at allocating resources, laptops, things like that, potentially, as we begin this shift, we may have to pick which schools, you know, may get those while they retain, some retain the lab while we transition, because we don't want to make sure there is a decrease in access to technology. So we may be needing to see if those, that we may be converting that space, which is a long-term goal, potentially as well for the division, but we just want to make sure there's not a decrease. If I understood, Mr. Haran, that was somewhat what you were asking as well.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure we're not losing anything. You know, my, my hunch is we're probably not. I also want to make sure the capacity, infrastructure capacity at these schools, the wireless capacity essentially, can handle a computer lab, you know, what's essentially additional computer lab operating. And I think our computer labs are typically used for, you know, majority of the day, every day, because there's a class of students that have their specials, computers, you know, there's a class that has it every day. So, you know, that, that just adds to your infrastructure. I think most of the existing computer labs that have, they're operating off desktop computers are hardwired. And adding, you know, thirty, or twenty-five, twenty-six additional pieces of equipment using wireless bandwidth.
If I could just put your mind at ease a little bit, if you recall, as we discussed, the BYOD initiative a couple of years ago, and moving toward allowing students to have their own devices, we started building our infrastructure in every building to ensure that we'd be able to accommodate that onslaught. So another thirty machines in an infrastructure that we're working, have been working toward right now, won't, won't break the bank. However, having said that, some schools are ahead of other schools. And you'll recall that we started a infrastructure build-out to, you know, increase the cabling at certain schools. So we have a plan to do that, and we work very closely with Scott and the instruction folks to make sure we're all doing, we're all on the same page. So we're acutely aware of the infrastructure and the demand on it, and we'll continue to work to make sure we provide the best service possible.
Yeah, I just don't want these kids sitting there doing their task, a part of the curriculum that they're in the computer lab for, and having spinning wheels.
We're not, we're not going to let that happen.
Dr. Mira, initially, the elementary schools weren't necessarily participating in the BYOD program, so
I know, but, but, but the wireless infrastructure build-out
Okay.
includes the elementary schools.
It does, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. I, I guess the only thing that I would say as we move forward with this is, and I don't know where we fit into that whole accounting of it, is finding out what the PTOs have done as far as providing laptops and whatnot, because I know Moncur
The, the PTOs and the laptops and Chromebooks and stuff that they provide, there are additional instructional appliances for use outside of the, you know, what they go to computers or computer lab for.
I don't know that, is that true?
You know, this whole thing that we're talking about, this whole Google Apps movement and
Right.
the different way of teaching and learning, we're going to use all these devices, whether they're
Absolutely. No, I don't disagree with that.
Toward that end. So it's, it's not really going to matter if you're sitting in a computer lab. And, and, and if I can add, the, the whole idea, years ago, when we, we got the laptop carts that were mobile, the, the whole vision there was to bring the computer lab to the classroom.
Right.
It's just that we didn't have enough. And everybody ended up, you know, trying to get the computer carts to the classrooms. But now, with PTAs and PTOs, with us doing cyclic replacement, and with the cost of Chromebooks so low, we're going to be able to get closer to that realization.
Right. And just to finish my thought about the laptops, was that I, I know that Moncur, their PTO, made that a priority, was to have every student in the school to have a Chromebook. So that, that's all I was getting at, was to say, when we're looking at doing all this stuff, let's figure out what we have as far as infrastructure, but things to support the mobile classrooms. That's it.
Just real quick, so where are we at, since you're up here, Mr. Dr. Mira? Where are we at with Ferry Farm and the schools?
So we're at the same place that I updated you last. We're waiting, any day now, to get the quote back for the, for the Ferry Farm project. And as soon as we get it, we're going to identify funds, and we're moving forward, and that's the last school we got to do.
All right. So as soon as, when, one of these days
We haven't forgotten about that.
Oh, I, I know I haven't. I know I haven't. And I'm getting ready to spin up the Magosker Pain Fest, so, all right, just let me know.
You give that contractor.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Then at this time, we will
Madam Chair, so what did we, just real quick, so what did we decide on, I think Ferry Farm and Falmouth, and I think the Falmouth thing is kind of close, or are we waiting?
No, well, I do have a question. What, you know, what are we doing here?
What are we doing?
What is the process?
Well
I mean, I know we're going to have to have a public hearing at some point, but are we, are we kicking this thing, so our committee to take a look at and, and give us any recommendations?
My, my suggestion was going to be, is we talk about the process next Tuesday, since we now have this information.
Okay.
Because we're already talking redistricting, I mean, or reshifting, whatever word we're going to use, with high school, let's talk about that process. I, I think that's going to be better for a work session than bring it for approval to the board in January, of whatever the process we would come up with.
Yeah. Because I don't know if I'm as close as I was on Falmouth, looking at the numbers and number of students that we're talking about now. You know, and, and both those areas, like I said, started with, they make sense of why we should do it, but I, you know, I, I don't want to disrupt an existing school's world, and, you know, I want to make it as easy as possible for the students that have to be moved as well. So I, I just want to make sure all of this is, is fully ironed out, and we really, truly know what, you know, first day of school, next school year is going to look like at Falmouth Elementary School.
And for all our students. And I, that's why I think if we can talk about that process, if we want to change how we've done it, let's talk about that in work session first, now that we have additional information, which we didn't have last time. But then we would want to get the process, whatever it is that the board chooses to do, as soon as possible.
So we're going to add the elementary school redistricting to this topics for discussion at the work session, just for the record? Add that to the agenda.
That's what I heard.
What's our next steps, I guess?
Right.
Next steps. All right. Ms. Egan.
Pursuant to Section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss a legal matter and personnel matter pursuant to the legal exemption at Section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A seven, and personal exemption at Section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A one of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended.
Sir, a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session.